Good morning. That was John, so is it 25 or 50?
Fifty for me.
Fifty, okay. All right, welcome. We are here this morning to discuss and vote on our changes, the expansion changes in the recommended budget that we've been working on for a number of weeks or it seems like a number of months. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our county manager, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have one update for you. As you all know, Beaufort County is under the state health plan. And for some reason, the state health plan renews on a calendar year basis instead of a fiscal year basis. They've done that for years. Don't know why, but they do. So when we build our proposed budget during the first of the year, we have to anticipate what we think the changes in the state health plan will be. Because we usually don't get those until about mid-year. Since our last meeting, we have received the new updated health insurance from state health plan. And essentially, it is flat. It will be an increase of eight cent per month, per employee. So essentially, it's flat. We built into the budget a 5% increase for health insurance, just to try and, and we were afraid that still wasn't going to be enough. So out of that, I wanted you to know that because of that change, and because it is a calendar, it is a calendar year change instead of a fiscal year change, we anticipate realizing about $160,000 in savings based on that. So I wanted to give you that information, because that was a change from the last time. And then I want to bring your attention to three documents that staff has put on your, in front of you. I think Commissioner, the chairman, has put something in front of you as well. But the first one I bring your attention to is called Manager's Budget. Manager's Budget Message Fiscal Year 24-25 Final Budget. This is the recap of all the work that you've done during your budget sessions. You'll see it lists general fund changes to revenue, general fund changes to expansion, they balance, and then changes in the solid waste fund on the revenue side, and changes in the solid waste fund on the expansion side, and they two balance. So those are your changes. Then you have the FY 24-25 Budget Ordinance. That is the ordinance in which the board votes on and passes. It is what we operate under for the next fiscal year. It lists out the revenues and expenses and the FTEs associated with the sheriff's office, and it also puts in there the restrictions you have on the sheriff's office for keeping their funds. So this budget ordinance is based upon the manager's recommended changes, or the final message that I put in place here for you, based on your changes to the recommended budget. So this ordinance reflects that at this point. And then there is one final piece that you have, Budget Amendment. Because a couple of years ago, the General Assembly enacted a law that read, if you serve on a nonprofit, you may not vote on the budget if you are appropriating funds to that nonprofit. So as we did in prior years, we have taken out of the budget, out of the proposed budget. So these pieces in here, you have two of your commissioners. Commissioner Langley serves on the BHM Library Board, and he also serves on the Greenlamp Board. You have proposed funding for Greenlamp, that's new funding, and BHM is always in our budget because they are our library system. So these funds, and then Commissioner Booth serves on the Boys and Girls Club, so we've pulled these funds out of the budget ordinance. This budget amendment is not reflected in this budget ordinance. So we do that so that Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley can vote on the overall budget, and then we would ask the board afterwards to vote on the budget amendment, excluding Commissioner Langley for one part of it, and excluding Commissioner Booth for the other part of it, to put these funds back in for the main budget, so that they don't run into violation of statute relating to that. If you have any questions regarding that, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, this is your budget and your final discussion regarding the budget. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, what we have before you, before we open the floor for our discussion? I think everybody understands this is the same format we've been receiving in the past.
We're going to be able to vote on these budget amendments individually and not en masse.
You have to.
Yet. When we get to this, we'll have to recuse them. The floor is open for discussion on the budget, and it's open to add to or take away. Instead of doing what we did in the workshop, I would suggest that if you have something you want to add or take away, we do it with a motion, and we require a second this time, and then we'll take a vote on it to see if it goes forward.
Mr. Chairman, I still, I know we voted on this before, but I still want to do something for our, extra for our employees. That 1% 401K, I would put that back, I'll make a motion that we fund that again.
Can you tell me what the cost of that is again?
I think it was $148,000.
Yes, sir. I just trued up the numbers on that. It's an estimate, of course, because we don't know what employees will participate and not participate, but I'm estimating between $115,000 and $125,000.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion. Okay, no discussion, we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor of adding the 401K, 1%, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Please stand so she can see it. Okay. All right, floor is open for any other changes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We helped all municipalities on their special funds. I make a motion that we would fund the city of Washington, designate money for a splash pad for $10,000.
Can we have a motion to add $10,000 to the splash pad?
And the reason I brought it back up, I'd done some research. We were told at our budget workshop that they were hiring three people, and that was incorrect information to run that splash pad, boys, the research that I've done.
I'm assuming this is a one-time, okay, one-time. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Now we have discussion on the addition of $10,000 to the city.
Isn't the, excuse me, isn't the city of Washington raising recreation fees on people outside the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Thank you. We're still open. Additions, subtract, subtractions or changes. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented with, well, I guess we've got to back up. We'd had to make changes based on these two before we can actually vote.
Make changes for what, too?
I, I know, but I mean, you've got, you've got, you guys would have to update this before we legally can vote.
No, sir, nothing that you've done so far has changed this at all.
The $10,000?
Both of those failed.
That's right. I'm sorry. Sorry. A little thick this morning. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the manager's budget that's before us, as well as the budget ordinance. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Whoa, 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 you've got some discussion. I'm not going to vote for this budget. It's another fat budget. We, there's not a tax reduction for the people that are paying the taxes in Beaufort County included in this budget. What this board is doing is taking all of the surplus that's coming into the county because of inflation. You don't see that amount of money. You just see what you're paying for taxes. Sales taxes are way up. You have new construction in the county. We collect several million dollars a year altogether on this. And this board is taking this and spending it and saying, we're really great guys. We didn't raise your taxes. Yes, you did. You increased spending. And I'm not voting for the budget because it's another bloated fat budget with nothing for the taxpayer in it.
Anyone else?
Anyone?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go to the negative again. I'm not going to vote for it. Of course, you guys remarked that we never vote for it, and we don't. Because as you've said many times, it's the numbers. You guys have the majority, we're the minority. We have never really had a functional decision-making process in any of these budgets. We make suggestions, and they fall on deaf ears. You guys do what you want to do. I think Hood is very much right. A lot of money's come into our coffers. We have more money now than we've ever had. Yet, we're going into the fund balance. We're going to fund balance, what is it, $10 million right now that we know of to build a school at $383 a foot at the lowest point of the lot. Still makes no sense to me. It is insanity and full view. So the more government has money, the more government is going to spend money. And this board of commissioners has proved that year out and year in. This year is just another example. We're going to find that we have less money in our fund balance when this is all over than we had a year ago. And so I'm not going to support that, and I won't support it next year unless we start making some changes how we allocate spending in this county.
I don't agree with Hood not staying on this budget, but I'm kind of disappointed. I'm very, very disappointed that we cherry pick how we do things. I think it's a disgrace that we got funds and we won't even support our own employees. And the other thing about it is that we gave every municipality extra funding on their project that asked for it, except for the city of Washington. Now, I'm disappointed in that. I mean, I don't sit and eat breakfast every morning with the boys at the city of Washington, but I believe in fairness.
Other comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the budget ordinance for '24-25, raise your right hand. Those opposed.
All right.
Okay.
Now we've got to do the amendment.
All right. Let me ask this.
Yes.
The 1% for the 401K failed, so I ask this question. To do another 1% in pay raise, how much would that be?
$120,000. I've already asked.
You already asked.
You want to make that a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'll second that motion.
Can I get clarification? Are you saying to our, this one is for salary, or is it the?
Salary.
Your increase in COLA 1%? Is that for a second?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Any discussion? We've got a motion and a second.
Okay, I have some discussion. Okay. Gentlemen, it is an election year. Washington, NC is no different than Washington, DC. The question is, how do we buy these votes this election year? And that's what this is all about, is vote buying. We had a budget that everybody sitting in this room had agreed to, with the exception of a few things, and now, all of a sudden, because it didn't pass, instead of it not passing because we're reducing cost, it's not passing because the issue is to spend more money. So taxes have to go up when you're doing things this way. So the public needs to be a keen observer to what's really going on up here and what the motives are for this board.
Yes.
You know, and I'm going to give you a rebuttal, you know, whether or not this motion passed or failed, or even if I had made the motion, it will have no impact on whether I'm re-elected or not. And the other thing is, if I'm not re-elected, I'm not going to crawl up in the corner and die. I have a life outside of this.
All right. The reason I'm supporting the motion and not the 401K is that in the job market that we're in, our biggest competition is starting salary. It's not the fringe benefits. We were spending more every year as a result of changes in Raleigh as it relates to the pension thing, pension fund. You know, that's causing roughly 1% more in salaries that our employees never see. In the business world, you don't get a pension fund and then turn around and get 401s on top of it. I believe our biggest concern is being competitive in the marketplace and bringing new talent in to the county. So that's why I'm supporting that versus the 401K. So other discussion. Okay, go ahead, John.
Two things on that. One is, you're not, the 1% is not going to, it's not going to get you, I don't think, what you're after, which is to be more competitive with starting salaries in the market, because it's spread out over everybody. So it's not just getting to, it's not just getting to the starting salaries where we need to be competitive. Secondly, for every 1% we spend on that, there's all these legacy costs that go along with it. I mean, all the stuff that we're spending on the retirements, the healthcare and all that, that will continue to grow, that the employees don't see either. So I'm not going to be able to vote for it.
Well, you know, my whole thought process is this, you know, the 401K doesn't help the retirement, but this does. And that is, that is my goal. I've been a county employee and a state employee, and so I understand it, and I get it, and that's why I'm doing what I'm doing. I mean, if you have a company, whether it's local government, you're only as good as your employees. And I feel that we have great employees in every department, so as long as I can inhale and exhale and I'm on this board, I will always try to do what's right for our employees. And if people want to boot me out, so be it. I'll go down fighting. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Randy?
I've hired a lot of people through the years, and when we sit down and talk about employment, nobody really says, well, what's the retirement? They want to know, what am I going to get paid an hour? And I think that's where a lot of the difference is, bringing in new people. And it's like John said, this isn't going to be the end-all thing that gets more people in here, but it helps. And just to get that little bit more in there. So like I said, most of these young folks, they don't think about retirement. Now that I'm older, I wish I had have done better, but don't we all?
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to increase the 3.5 to 4.5, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Okay, that's a change in the budget. All right. Any other item you want to address? Brian, are you getting?
No, sir. Y'all go ahead and do what y'all got to do. We would just need a few minutes for us to get you the budget ordinance corrected.
Any other changes you want to make? We've got to have four votes to get a budget, so this is your opportunity. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break? Will 10 minutes do it?
If you'll give us 15, I'll be.
Okay, we're going to take a 15-minute break and let staff redo the budget ordinance. Okay, we're back from our break, and staff has redone the budget ordinance, so I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the first piece you have is the revised final message, and that's where the changes occur. So if you look under General Fund Expansion, it says increase COLA by 1%. That's a plus $120,000. Right below that, you'll see decrease health insurance. What we've done is we've taken the savings that you realize in the health insurance, because we anticipated there being more have to be spent, and there wasn't. So then we've taken that decrease of minus 120, so it's, there's no change there. Right? So it balances out. So then if you, so the budget numbers are the same. The revenue side still balances with the expansion side. And if you flip over to the solid waste fund, you'll see that under expansion, we increased the COLA by 1%, which is $250, and we decreased the health insurance by $250, because we only have a half a position associated with that. And then in the water fund, you'll see where we decreased the health insurance by $10,935, and we increased 1% COLA, which is $10,935, so that balances out at zero. Now, Anita will explain to you why the budget ordinance doesn't need to change.
Okay, the reason the budget ordinance doesn't need to change is because essentially, like the manager said, we took one expenditure, the health insurance, and reduced that and just changed that to a 1% COLA. So that makes sense?
Which is all under our salary and benefits.
Yes, exactly.
Part of the budget.
Yes.
Now, the $160,000 savings is really going to be showing for July 1st through December 31st? That's where the 150, 160 is?
The rate change is effective January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. So really, we've got one and a half budget years.
So it'll be January 1st through June 30th, 2025, is when we will experience this 160, the full 160 in that second half, or first half, rather, of 2025?
Second half of 2025.
Okay, and then we would experience another $160,000 in the second half of 2025?
60 is an annual amount.
Okay, so it's only going to be, then it's only 80,000?
That's true. It is. We can make, we can make the extra 40,000 work, though, with vacancies. I see what you're saying. I didn't think about that, but you're exactly right. It is just half the savings in this fiscal year, but we, I think we can make it work with the 40,000 difference.
Okay.
I'm comfortable that we can.
Okay.
Yeah, the 160 would be split between two fiscal years. We needed 120. We have 80, so I believe we can make up the 40,000 difference with, within the salary and benefit lines, based on vacancies that we have throughout the year.
That's not the way we normally do it, though, is it?
No, and if I need to go back and do the extra 40, I can.
Okay.
But I don't feel like that's necessary.
Any other questions as it relates to the change that was made? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the, well, you, okay, John?
Before we leave this, I think it's, in this budget is an expansion of EMS, county EMS, into Blunts Creek, converting a QRV to a full ambulance, $392,000. We know this about the plan. We know that it's going to reduce, to do this, we have to create a new tax district, which will be the Blunts Creek EMS tax district. You're shaking your head.
Yeah, we won't have to create a new one. The board is responsible for how the funds are distributed for each tax district, so we won't have to create a new one.
Okay, we'd have to change where that money flows to.
Which is at the discretion of the board, yes.
Right, okay. So we would be taking away roughly, what, $110,000 from Chacoody? Was it?
I believe the number was $102,000.
$102,000 from Chacoody and $30,000 from Aurora to fund the chain, which will, which does not fund anything close to what the need is. So we're going to expand the general fund expenditures by somewhere between $118,000 and $180,000. I think you got, the number you got in here is 146. Now, the question, two questions are. Number one is, what is the mileage on this unit we're going to be putting down there? I mean, it's a spare, right?
It'll be a spare. We will implement this using a current spare unit.
Okay. How close is this spare unit to have to be replaced?
The spare unit we're using right now is 200, 209,000 miles on it. It was previously at our Bell Hated Station.
209,000. And when would you normally replace a unit?
We try to remove it as a frontline unit between 150,000 and 200,000 miles.
Okay, so you're taking one that should already be, if it's going to be a frontline unit, it should already be replaced?
That's correct.
And we're making a frontline unit?
Yes, sir.
So how much is that going to cost us to replace it?
So to replace a new unit in the future, you're looking at about 350,000 miles.
Okay. So added to this plan is another 350,000?
For future, for future vehicle replacement.
But it's already at that point, if it's going to be a frontline unit?
Yeah, let me back up, just so that I'm clear. Our purpose for using a spare truck to initiate this is to minimize the cost of implementation. So moving forward, that would be another vehicle that would have to come under our capital replacement plan, as would be for any other asset that we have in the county.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, but the plan says it should be replaced at 200,000 miles?
We try not to run them over a four-frontline truck over 150,000 to 200,000.
Okay. So again, I think we've got to add to this that cost when we're talking, when we're talking about this expansion.
That's correct.
The problem here is that Chacoody could probably handle this issue if we didn't have, if we could get numbers that we could be relied upon, and that their funding was in order, in my view. I don't know that it's, I still don't, you still haven't convinced me at least, that we're going to ultimately provide a better service to the residents of Blunts Creek and Chacoody by doing it this way.
So for Blunts Creek, I understand we have a difference of opinion.
Yes.
So I'll give my side of the opinion. Having a transport truck in the Blunts Creek District would be better than a QRV that we have right now. Now, I know in conversation in the past, the disagreement we have is that you would view the response of a QRV paramedic as equal to the response of a transport, because we're putting a care provider on the scene. And that is the case, but you're not speeding up transport. The other vulnerability we have on the south side, and I think it's very clearly demonstrated on the map of EMS calls that we share, is the lack of transport, I think that's shared through Anita's computer, is the lack of transport trucks on the south side. So we have to keep in mind that a transport truck at a maximum can only transport two patients. And that, those would not be critical, critical patients or patients with significant medical needs. We can typically put one on the stretcher and one on the bench seat, and that's the most that our ambulances can transport. The problem we have on the south side is if we have just a significant MVC, more than two patients, then we're depleting resources, and that ambulance coming to get them is a long ways off. And that ambulance coming to get them is a long ways off. So, so the, the, the availability of transport trucks on the south side and our Blunts Creek truck being central to that south side, being able to move to Aurora, to Chaco Winity, in my opinion, is a, is a improved service to the Blunts Creek community.
And how many times have we run into that issue?
For second, for, for MVCs with multiple patients, I, I haven't run those numbers. We can, but I haven't. Was it? Uh, yes. So the map that you see on the screen now, this is mapping the location of calls that occurred in Beaufort County, EMS calls that occurred in Beaufort County in the calendar year of 2023. Now, keep in mind, some of those dots may be multiple responses to the same physical address. Okay? But what you see highlighted here is the red rings that you see are six mile radiuses of a station that currently has a transport truck. And often in our conversations, we've talked a lot about the gap that we have on the south side. To me, this map illustrates it, and you can see the number of calls that occur in that Blunts Creek area. That purple ring is six miles of where our QRV is stationed right now. But when you have calls in that area, that's, that's illustrating the distance that a transport truck is having to come just to carry that patient from that location to a hospital.
Yeah. What we cannot put our finger on is how important that is to saving the patient. That, that extra five minutes of, of getting a transport truck there. If you've got a paramedic on site, and in Blunts Creek, one third of the calls has a response also from the fire department.
As an assistance.
As assistance.
So now you're, go, go ahead.
Okay. And those could be EMTs or a paramedic.
So we, we have to be careful with the fire response to an EMS call. Okay? So there are circumstances in which fire departments can provide medical care. Our fire
Assistance.
Can provide. So, so there's a, there's a difference between assistance and providing care. So let me, um, let, let, let me back up and explain that, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. So fire departments in Beaufort County often assist EMS agencies. And a lot of the times, that may be in the form, most likely, in the form of lift assist, having to move a patient from one location to the other, and in the, in the form of assisting with manpower for cardiac arrest, so CPR, right? Our fire departments, under first responder provisions, can assist EMS with that. Now, EMS care beyond that, unless your fire department is credentialed by the Office of Emergency Medicine or OEMS in North Carolina, cannot provide that, right? So we've had in the past some departments that have done that at various levels. For example, Washington, right now, their fire trucks are inspected by OEMS and improved to function at a paramedic level, meaning they have the equipment on their fire truck to provide paramedic services. Blunts Creek and our other departments do not. The issue that creates for providers, because a lot of our responders have multiple hats that they wear, and I will use David Williams in Blunts Creek as an example. David's full-time employment is with us as a paramedic. And as long as he is working with Beaufort County EMS, he can function and provide care as a paramedic. When he leaves his employment with us, and he goes to his daytime employment with Blunts Creek, he cannot provide that level of care because Blunts Creek is not credentialed to provide medical response at that level as a fire department. Now, the thing that we allow our employees to do to help with that liability is we tell our employees, you respond to a call and you think you can help, you help, but your time goes on our time card, right? That way you're covered under our agency. You're not breaking protocols and licenser issues, and you're functioning under us. For, for David to be, even though he is a state paramedic, he responds to, to a call as a Blunts Creek fireman, and he provides various EMS interventions, he's not documented under us, and that could put him in a, in an issue with his certification. And that is the case with a lot of our fire departments.
But if your, if your QRV's responded with a paramedic, he, he could certainly assist.
Our QRV is able to function as a paramedic. They just cannot transport.
Right.
I think the, uh,
So, so again, I think the question is that we have not been able to establish is how critical it is to patient care to get, get a transport there within, within the 10, 15 minutes, if you've got the QRV with a paramedic already there?
So I, I, I think with all due respect, it's hard to argue that staying on scene with a medical patient is good for the patient. And in most spheres, when you're talking about the treatment of a patient, remember we're in emergency medicine. We are not, at this point in time, with our protocols, designed to provide extended care on scene. Our role is to address the immediate issue, the transport to the hospital. And that is where I think that need is hard to, to argue, that the faster we can get a transport truck on scene, the faster we can get a patient who's called 911 to the hospital is good for the patient, not, not vice versa. Jeff, Jeff had something that he'd like to mention.
Yeah, with the difference in the QRV and the transport truck, especially seen in our stroke and our steamy protocols, uh, a lot of times getting them to that, uh, facility is huge, especially with stroke. We're looking at being able to give TPA, being able to do CTs and stuff. And that's where time is money, where, where it's real critical to get those patients to there to be able to start interventions in a timely manner that is actually, uh, studied and, uh, put in place by the hospital. Example, a stroke patient. We really need to get them on that CT's table and start TPA within a 30 to 40 minute window from three hours of their onset of things. To have that transport truck there and being able to get them to there is very critical.
Uh, Brandon, can you, can you bring up my spreadsheet? Uh, for the commissioners and staff, uh, you have a copy of this in front of you. But for the audience, uh, these are budgets that were submitted to emergency management. Uh, for '22, '23, '23, '24, that should represent actual numbers for 10 months and projections for two months. That's based on the date that they gave that to emergency management. Uh, and you can see, uh, the revenue stream is taxes, billings, and transport. Now, what I'm assuming is in '22, '23, that the billings for the transport were in that 720,000. But for some reason, it was broken out in '23, '24 as a separate item of 350,000. And then the last one that was sent to us, unless Chris has got a more updated one, that budget is 961,000, and the expenses projected at 885 with a $75,000 surplus. The thing that concerns me is who paid for the deficit in '23, '24? Who paid for that $302,000 projected loss? Uh, it has to come from somewhere. It didn't come from the county, so I'm assuming it's coming from the taxpayers in the town of Chaco Winity. And that it is coming out of the general fund, uh, unless somebody can tell me otherwise.
So i- if I could add one, one point of, of context to that. So budget worksheets, um, for all of our contracted agencies are sent out by our office as part of the budget process. So while we're completing as department heads the budget worksheet for our budget, our contracted agencies are doing the same. Um, and these are the submissions that we typically get back. And we normally get those back late March, early April, so that we can stay in sync with the budget process. When you're talking about EMS specifically, remember that, that we as a county has an EMS oversight committee that acts on behalf of you as the board. And one of their goals is to review these budget, uh, budget worksheets. So before it's ever coming to you, we get them from the agency. It goes before EMS oversight, they give the yay nay, and then we submit them, uh, from there. In FY '22 and '23, uh, the town of Chaco, or Chaco Winity EMS was submitting budget worksheets that included the service of 911 and the business of non-E, all in one sheet. And our EMS oversight committee at that point was saying we need to separate these two. That's why you see a number in 2024 that's different. So in 2022, 2023, that included the budget with the estimated billing revenue from 911 and the non-emergency transport. And in 2024, the billing revenue for the non-emergency transport was removed. That's why those numbers look differently, as I understand it.
Yes, John?
But 2024, '25 is gonna be different based on what we're just proposing. Based on this, if you're proposing this transfer? Because you're taking away 102,000 from taxes, and you're taking away roughly 50 some thousand from billings.
That's, that's correct. And these, again, these budget worksheets were submitted to us in April before any of these conversations.
Right.
Wait.
So you're degrading Chaco Winity while we're improving Blunts Creek?
Say that we're degrading Chaco Winity because they're still gonna have one 911 truck. Right? So the, the decision that, and we have Chaco Winity EMS in town here as well, the decision, as I understand it, is that come, starting this budget year, they will no longer have the non-emergency transport business. They're focusing on 911 truck. They've been contracted by the county to provide at least one truck, and that is what they would continue to do in the future.
The, the thing that's in the '24, '25 budget that alarms me is there is a loan payment in there of $60,000. I have never seen anything written in an email. It's all been conversation. So I'm gonna tell you what I've been able to piece together. That, that loan was used by the town to purchase the assets of the old EMS or the 501(c).
So that's, that's different from the conversations I have had. Um, but we have someone from Chaco Winity or the town who may be able to speak. I haven't seen anything in writing. All I know is the conversation.
Well, I, I, what, what is the purpose of the loan? What?
So from, from what I understand it, and, and you guys, would you guys like to speak or you won't either? I, I don't wanna speak on behalf when, when you may want to make that.
No, we're plowing a lot of ground here on something that has already been settled by the commissioners when we did the budget. Why are we bringing this up again and churning this thing again? It's, I, I don't wanna get into the mud on what's been going on in Chaco Winity, but you got a serious problem over there, and it looks like the town is aware of it. And the town has taken steps to resolve the problem. The commissioner sat here and said that if this doesn't work out in '24, '25 like we expected to do, that we would take a look at this maybe during the second or the third quarter of the fiscal year and make adjustments. Now, historically, we have loaned and given the town of Chaco Winity and the EMS unit over there money in the past, whether it's been paid back or not, I don't know. But we're beating a dead horse. Why don't we just shut this thing down? It was decided as a part of the budget, and I'm not for sitting here wasting my time, plowing the ground over and over and over. And that's what we're doing. That, that's, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah? Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Commissioner Refo deserved the same time everybody else gets. I mean, let him, I mean, we just can't catch him down. I'm fine, I'm fine. Let him, let him explain what he wants to explain.
We are not hitting on the nub of the issue over there. And if you wanna get down in the mud and get down in the dirt, I'll do it.
We know you'll do it because you're that kind of guy. But, but he deserved the same time that anybody else gets. And if you don't, if you have to go, we excuse you.
I'm not going anywhere. I thought I'd go.
All right, so what, what I can tell you about the loan is, um, is when we switched the assets from Chaco Winity EMS Incorporated to the town, there was no money switched for the assets. There was pretty much just a title transfer. Uh, where the half a million dollars come in at is the, uh, payroll taxes. Um, and that's what the town, um, took out of the water sewer fund to pay the payroll taxes of Chaco Winity EMS Incorporated, as best as that I can tell you.
You guys wanna wallow in this mud anymore? Or do you wanna get into the dishonesty and the audit part and the thieving and the stealing? Let it go.
Let's just go on with our budget.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Chris. All right. Any, any other comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Well, yeah, because we've got to vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, budget, uh, ordinance as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the budget ordinance presented for 2024 to 2025.
Okay. I have a second. And we have a second. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to comment. I just, just for the record, that's what everybody always say, just for the record. So I'm gonna say just for the record. Bath Recreation Department lights for field, $20,000. Bell Haven Recreation scoreboard, $6,000. Chaco Winity Recreation one-time lights, $24,000. We supported every municipality that required, requested some money except for the city of Washington. I think it's a disgrace. Callie's question.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one question.
Yes.
For the finance director. Can, can you tell me what would be the projected fund balance at the end of fiscal '24, '25? Just a rough estimate?
Yeah, let's get to it in my book here. Um, so I have the estimate at June 30th, 2024 at 25.2 million, and we're estimated to spend 700,000 next year fund balance. So if we take that away, we're looking at about 24.5 million. Fund balance.
So we're suffering, we're suffering the big hit this year on fund balance. And next year won't be so terribly bad. We're just losing about 700,000.
Um, the board voted to appropriate a $10 million grant match for the schools in the current fiscal year, '23, '24. That's what you're referring to, the big hit?
That's what I'm referring to.
Yes, sir. The board approved that.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of approving the '24, '25, uh, budget ordinance as presented, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Now we've gotta go to the budget amendments. If you'll look at that sheet.
So, Mr. Chairman, real quick, if, when you do that budget amendment, if you will do the first two, the DHM Library and Green Lamp, and excuse Commissioner Langley, and then do the second one, um, for the Boys and Girls Club, and excuse Commissioner Booth. We put them together, but you'll need to vote them separately. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, need a vote to excuse, uh, Langley on the DHM Library and, uh, Green Lamp.
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to stay in or?
No, I'm just on mute.
Okay, you're on mute. All right. All, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. All right. Need a motion, uh, to recuse Ed Booth as it relates to the, uh, Boys and Girls Club.
So moved. Second?
All right, motion second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, to recuse. All right. All those, I'd need a motion, I guess, to approve. Uh, is, is the 23 Advocorum taxes that, that?
That's the revenue that we're using to pay for those three outside agency fundings.
Okay, so, but the only one, we gotta vote on both of those, is, is that right? Or just the Boys and Girls Club?
Um, I guess the motion could be you're voting on the Boys and Girls Club appropriation, and it's being paid with the 2023. and it's being paid with the 2023 tax funding.
All right. Someone make a motion.
That's what a Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
I make a motion we approve.
All right. I'll second that. And all those in favor, raise your.
Let me ask one question first, just something you're asking.
The $283,000, we say that's coming out of tax revenues that was already, we've already put that in the budget. We're not doing something twice here.
That's right. We're not double counting it. Yes, sir. We pulled it out of the, the big ordinance that you just approved.
You pulled it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We got a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, or do we have to do, we don't have to do the, uh, anything else, do we? All right. I got you. I got you. Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Add a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.